Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. And we welcome everyone here today, whether you're with us in person or on the Zoom. And with me today, I have Don Schwenker, Ben Fliegel, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. Lisa's our county auditor. Bean Orner is here with IT. Luanne, our executive assistant, is back in the back here helping us. And first on our agenda, Mary is here with the media, of course. And first on our agenda is Jayden Chekel, our Jackson County engineer, assistant engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the only thing on our agenda is to just make the board aware that we have received a petition for roadway improvement from a border level B road to improve it to a level A following our road improvement policy. This is on Ninetieth Street, north of Seventy-Fourth Street. It's about five hundred and fifty feet worth of level B. If you recall, there is an entrance permit for Jason Effenheim on that wants to build on level B. That's where the petition is originating from, so. You got a petition with meeting the criteria from our road improvement policy of stating that a minimum of fifty percent of a decent landowner signature approval, what have you. So.
So that's meeting the minimum, that petition?
Yes, so now where we're at now is.
We need to locate it.
I know where it is. And this is to make you guys aware, we received this because as part of our policy, the next steps are we go out and do a topographic survey to do, uh, see, to design that portion up to level A and obviously a cost estimate to know what that is. And that starts those later discussions per our policy, but.
Is there an address, are you got?
It is, the new address is nine-nine-four-eight Ninetieth Street.
So, all right, did you tell us, Jason, that, or Jayden, that we give them a permit that was on to level B and we said it was their issue?
Yep.
A lot of this started with a conversation I had over Fourth of July with some people that own, they're my neighbors, they were across the they had applied for a work in the right away permit. And they were getting estimates to have somebody upgrade level B this street tree and just kind of fill it in. And I talked to him, I got in touch and we talked about the going from B to A, and he said he didn't even know that was an option. And so that's where this is stemmed from.
So you're talking the driveway by the building to the corner or how?
No, the level B starts about right here. And it'd be requested to go about, again, with, based on the beacon lines here, somewhere about right here where his entrance would go in.
So there's only three owners or neighbors that we're talking about.
Correct, yeah. And this property owner did stop in yesterday to talk about a little bit, so, because he had, he signed it, but.
Um, is there culverts or anything on that stretch?
There's, well, not now, there's not, until we do design, we won't know, it may not be needed.
It's just steep banks.
It is, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, the road is essentially a curb and gutter. But, uh, but this is just to make, I mean, nothing's been coming of it yet, but just got the policy, they didn't get the petition, so now we have to do what we need to do to come up with a cost estimate of what it takes.
Fresh, is there anything in that road policy, like, so obviously we weren't counting on rocking and maintaining that road. I really think in our road policy, you should have something to cover that cost for the year because they're not budgeted in there.
Well, that's where if, if this progresses, because you know, if the cost is super high, maybe they go, I don't want to do that. Or if it is reasonable, uh, there is the public hearings and we can have those discussions at that time.
Because, you know, I can just.
Who got the interest, remind me again?
Evan.
Okay.
I just see this kind of snowballing and rolling down the hill and getting bigger and bigger and now all of a sudden, we're gonna have however many miles of road that you guys weren't planning on ever basically maintaining, so it's not in our rock budget to maintain them. And personnel-wise, you know.
Yeah, luckily, to this point, it's been very small stretches to this point.
Yeah, but at some point.
And I've always said too, though, I, I mean, I would like to see a number, what it costs to maintain them, because we get two inches of rain like we did. You know that every four-wheeler and mudbawler knows where that road is, is having fun. And for us to go out there and spend three, four days to fix that, it's easier, almost be easier for us to put some rock on it that would tear up tires or something. Big rock, I, I don't know.
Well, if we, if this gets brought to grade A, there'll be curb and gut, you know, there'll be a ditch.
Yeah, again, yeah.
So.
But I'm just saying, it's gonna, for the next years, obviously, it's added expense to us that, you know, at least for the one-year budget cycle, you haven't planned on maintaining that section of road.
The big thing I would like to see is you get down towards in there is that we maintain kind of a, I don't know whether it's a a permanent easement that we could use their driveway as a turnaround point because.
It's gonna be a huge thing, because there's nowhere for a grader to turn or just greater dump truck, you know. I don't think either of you have been out there to see what that road is like, but there, like Supervisor Schwenker said, his driveway would have to be some sort of designed as a somewhat of a turnaround, because there would be nowhere for us to turn around, it'd have to be.
But then we have to kind of maintain that area where we turn around. So that's another added.
So let's have this discussion, I guess, when, as we proceed and see what happens, and we'll have to have more discussions, I'm sure.
To me, that should all be part of the design as far as we're gonna, because they can't really put their driveway in until we come through with the road and put the ditches in and all that kind of stuff. Because once you get past where the ditch is in, then it's gonna kind of funnel everything right back into the road. Until we get down more to the, I think, not too far beyond there, it actually kind of widens out down in the bottom or whatever. And then maybe the water can drain away, but that maybe needs to be, okay, you're gonna need a little wider driveway, because we need to be able to back in and at least get some kind of.
Yeah, I saw like the two-sixty-seventh street one that we are doing, that one, uh, we did design a gravel turnaround on the adjacent properties field entrance and we got the, all right, he came in the one day and I talked to him about it, he was all fine, but for that exact reason, you know, for us to maintain it to turn around with a grader or dump truck or whatever, but, so we did do that same exact thing on two-sixty-seventh street. Which, update on that, with the rain we got last night, we have the culvert and all the stuff delivered out there, we're just waiting for it to be somewhat dry for us to install it.
This week looks like it's dry.
Yeah.
And our guys with the storm that came through last night, um, we actually fared out fairly well as far as our department, uh, some of the guys had to go last night on calls and this morning, but.
Talked to Rick last night, but a couple of trees that were down and it looked like late that, uh, that the unloader was going out to move them, I think, the way it looked, so, yeah.
I want to just give our guys thanks for doing.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and pass it on from us too, that we appreciate their willingness to go out in, in that kind of weather, and I told the individual, I said, I can't send them out in inclement weather, then they're not safe, so. Hope people understand and be patient, you know, I know we gotta get somewhere tomorrow morning also, but just be patient.
And then, uh, last week of the meeting, we requested to know about, um, some grants that we have applied for, what we've been awarded for the past X amount of years, and, um, this goes back to year two thousand and twenty-two, uh, I guess I gave you guys the printout of grants that our office has applied for and received. Prior to that, I don't know if there was, there's not really records of a whole bunch of any, but so started from two thousand and twenty-two to where we're at currently and it's pretty large dollar, I'll be total model up for just a little over four-point-five million dollars, uh, in granted ninety-some percent of that's the two bridges we got awarded for, but, um, nevertheless, here's the, this is just a spreadsheet of grants we've applied for and gotten in the last.
Good information, that's what I was looking for, I mean, the public needs to know that we're applying and we're doing that kind of stuff and working to save them money also.
And the plan is for this list to keep expanding.
Growing, yeah, appreciate that. Uh, two-fiftieth?
I do, thank you very much.
Uh, yep, they're gonna be planning to be back tomorrow, assuming they're there this week. No, uh, depends on what, with the rain, the project they're working on in Clint County, uh, depending on what their shouldering issue was with the rain, but it's planned to be here tomorrow to pay it. Nice.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Any questions for Jayden? Thank you, sir. Are there any visitors or citizens here with us today that would like to approach the board? Hearing or seeing none. Um. Ethan? Anything you'd like to start?
Just need a motion to approve the minutes of the July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four board proceedings as written by the auditor Smith and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Okay.
That motion to approve the minutes.
So again, a motion to second approve the minutes and publication of the July ninth, two thousand and twenty board proceedings as written, all those in favor say aye. Not opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second.
Motion second to approve the claims in the amount of eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and twenty-two cents as presented. But note, we have some large claims in there from the law center, some were carry-throughs, uh, I think for the E O C, correct? I believe there's a few of them in there.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna ask for five-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, so yes, so five-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand of the eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight is for the law center.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye, and aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission's special meeting minutes for the June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meetings, uh, as written by Director of Human Resources, Becky Chatham.
It was, oh, second.
I have a motion and second to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission, uh, special meeting minutes as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a renewable Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Bluff Lake at ninety-three oh-one Ninety-Fifth Avenue, Macocana, effective July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
One more.
Second.
Motion and second to approve a renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Bluff Lake as presented. All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for six-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents to Rick Widener, AIA, ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc., one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and fifty-three cents to Bill Bruce Builders, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred dollars stronghold Industries, Inc., two-hundred-and-sixty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty, Inc., fifteen thousand, sixty-two dollars and nine cents to Century Laundry Distributing, Inc., which was already paid on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to Mendling, and one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars to AT Disposal for a total cost of five-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and forty cents, and authorize the chair's signature on the project cost recap to the Law Enforcement Center for the month ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
One more.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the invoices as presented with the chair's signature, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve invoices, this is a deject, um, so they're making a correction to the billing statement of a hundred-and-twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty, Inc., two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents to Macocana Fitness and Poly Electric Utility, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and seventeen cents to Jackson County Fair Association, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and fourteen cents to Dean Engel, and five-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fifty cents to Amber Matisson for a total cost of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten dollars and twenty-seven cents and authorize the chair's signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and the ISU, the four-H Outreach Center for the month ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
And for the personal, the, the expenses for the personal, the names on there, that is, they accrued an expense and they're getting reimbursed, but they're.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the invoices for the outreach center as presented, all those in favor say aye, aye opposed, motion carried, do you know, are we about done with invoices for that building?
I would think so.
Because we had everything approved and signed off and we're still getting the remnants of the last, yeah?
I, I'm thinking this is probably, yeah, I think this could be the end, I mean, I would think that everything now would be switched over to them paying, like M M U N said, that the building phase is done, this is completed, so I'm, I'm thinking that this is probably our last.
All right, thank you.
Um, I did, I did spend just a little bit of time, I did have to go down to the senior center, and so I, we just need to make a decision, you need, as a board, you need to make a decision, um, if it's okay or not to remove the stage at the Jackson County Senior Center. They're looking for permission to either remove it, if you don't want to remove, then we just gotta say, you know, I want it removed and it stays. But they're looking for some direction from you.
So do we have our maintenance guy look at it?
They're, the only thing that they're asking us to do, not to remove it, they have someone that will remove it themselves.
Yes, we let them remove it.
Yep.
Okay, so did we just not put a railing on that stage? A couple of years ago?
The railing went on because somebody fell off and.
Yeah.
I know at one point they asked for, they wanted Marty to put a ramp on it, because people have, if it's in the way, it's in the way. I got no problem, if they got somebody who want to take it out, I got the problem getting rid of it.
I have no problem with it, long as they don't want it back in six months.
And that would be my thing is, I would not be approving to put it back.
How, how big is this stage, by the way?
Oh, it's a twelve by fifteen, twelve by sixteen.
So it's not thirty feet long or?
No.
I, that, I, I'm going down, I met with them, they did question, they talked about it then, and they said literally, nobody uses it, nobody wants to go up on it. It, it kind of just takes up a big chunk of the foreplant. And even down there, I got thinking, with this extra furniture we got with, together we, uh, the piece bike, maybe they could use some upgrading, because their stuff's pretty bad down there, maybe we could try to do something, but I, I, I would make a motion, if they got somebody who want to take it rid of it, under the supervision or in conjunction with working with Jeff, I got, I would make a motion to get rid of it.
Do we need a motion or just maintenance, is this maintenance?
I guess.
So they're gonna have to coordinate with Jeff when they take it out?
I would like.
Just, just to, just to get him, just to make sure, I don't want him, all of a sudden, there's power connected to it and all kind of stuff.
Well, I would like to have Jeff look at it before they have somebody else take it out, because if there's like gonna be damage to the floor or something, I don't want to now, we have to replace a whole floor because we've done this too.
Is Jeff coming in today?
Uh, he's supposed to. Yeah, let's hold on that.
I think the carpeting is actually going down to cement, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't, I think that's a cement floor.
I would just, like I say, I would just say, I don't have a problem with him taking it out if they want to, but just make sure Jeff looks at it, there, there isn't some unforeseen thing, like there's power cords or something like that.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, so is the stage over top the carpet now?
Well, we don't know.
That's what I don't know, that's, again, not knowing and, you know, they drill holes into the cement or.
Well, so that was, that's the, that's the question, uh, the stage itself does have carpeting squares on it, that's what it looks like when it is.
All right, let's, let's have Jeff take a look. He said anything to that.
So with that being said, I have no further business for them.
Thank you. And we will be joined by Ruth Altbridge, Jackson County Veterans Affairs Administrator, that's a different title than we're used to here. Good morning, Ruth.
Good morning. Um, so, not a lot to update you on, because I've been in the job approximately sixteen days, so.
I haven't heard anything.
That means you should have been busy, exactly, yeah.
We have been very, very busy, um, we are working on, by the end of the month, we need to send our activities report to the state, basically showing how we use, um, they gave us ten thousand dollars last year, showing how we use that ten thousand dollars for that this year. Um, and I believe, what I think happens is then they release, once they get that, they approve it, then they release our funds for this upcoming year. Um, there are some changes with that, but I don't exactly know how that all works, so, um, I can't really update you on that, but we did, we did spend, um, the entire ten thousand dollars that they gave us last year, so, so that is good. Um, Tricia and I are working towards our accreditations. Um, we are currently taking the trip training, which that is the training responsibility and involvement in claims preparation. Normally that is taken after the basic benefits course, but we reached out to the, um, who did I reach out to? Brian Dale, Nathan, Nathan Anderson at the VA, and he said we could take our trip training before and then take our basic benefits course, so that will give us access hopefully to, um, the VA system, so we can start to file claims, so it's not all on boost. So we'll see if they actually let us do that, um, because normally you have to be accredited, um, through that basic benefits course before, but at least once we're done with our basic benefits course, there will be no waiting, um, to do that, so that was a huge benefit, um, I think.
Good.
And, um, I met with Kelly, um, from Jackson County Economic Alliance, she updated me on the Homebase Iowa program. It sounds like we're just in the final stages, um, waiting for the DOT to put up the signs and then planning that celebration, um, they had talked, I guess, with Brianna about combining it with Wednesdays Are Possible and doing a, like an interview with a veteran business owner, um, and then having that kind of celebration ceremony, which I guess is required for Homebase Iowa.
True.
Uh, what else? Oh, um, met with the Veterans Affairs Commissioners, um, gave them a brief update on the departmental changes. And we discussed where they want to see the office moving forward, they talked really about community outreach and reaching out to those veterans that they, um, believe aren't being served, um, certain regions, um, they felt maybe in our county weren't being served as well as others, so we're gonna try to reach out, do a little more outreach to veterans, see, um, if we can't get that good reputation, you know, in Jackson County that I think we've had, but definitely have that word of mouth where it's like, hey, go see, you know.
So is there a certain, certain group we're targeting here that we're not getting to, or is there a?
Is there a group or area?
Age, age or?
So like, maybe do a mobile?
We could, we could do something like that, yeah, I would like to talk to them a little more, it was kind of a, kind of a vague discussion that we had, so I'd like to talk to them a little bit more about what areas they'd like us to see, to see us go into, maybe, you know, where they feel, um, we're just not doing as much outreach maybe, so we'll see how that goes. And then we also have, I went to the Bellevue Legion meeting also, I told you I've been busy. I know, and, um, we talked about the All Veterans March, so I'm sure you've seen the signs around Jackson County for that All Veterans March. That is going, so they're gonna have veterans, um, line up at four P M. at Onward Fine Art Center. They have wagons for veterans that aren't unable to walk, I think they have like eight of them, they said, so quite a few, they're hoping to get two-hundred to three-hundred veterans participating in this. So they're really wanting it to be a big deal, they need help with, um, decorating the wagons, they're looking for people to hand out, even that aren't veterans, to hand out items, you know, to kind of assist with the whole process, and then they're also looking for, um, volunteers to help at the fair, they have a booth, so we'll be going, you know, um, to help out with that and kind of.
I think I heard four P M., but I'm not so sure, I heard a date.
Oh, I'm sorry, June twenty-third.
July twenty-third.
July twenty-third, thank you.
Be the fair parade.
Yeah, the date of the fair parade, yes, so July twenty-third at four P M., the Onward Fine Art Center is where they're lining up, and they will be, they'll be pretty close to the front of the parade.
I was gonna say, my question is, knowing how the fair parade lines up, if they're meeting at four P M. at onward, how are they getting to the front of the parade?
I have not been involved in.
My guess is, Don, they're gonna have to go down around the water tower and come.
They're gonna have to come up main.
Yes, I know, they have talked to the city, they've done a lot of talking with the city, I guess, I'm, I'm coming at the, at the very end of it, so, um.
Well, it's complete chaos from Maine east, so if they're gonna come around, bypass and come up Main Street, we're probably, I don't.
And.
So they'd have to come on, and then come.
Special.
Yeah.
Exception.
Right, so I really have no idea what the logistics.
Don't figure that out.
Yeah, they, um, like I said, I haven't been involved in the, in the planning process, so, anyway, so that is all the update I have, do you have any questions?
I'll probably stop by and talk to you at some point.
Sounds good.
No questions for Ruth?
Give up the good work?
Yeah, if you, if you need anything from us, let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, we're here to help and, or be a good neighbor anyway, so.
Yeah, well, thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thanks, how wonderful Tuesday.
Okay, uh, Jeff Kilberger, Jackson County Facilities Manager, has joined us, good morning, Jeff.
Everyone.
With a update.
Yep, just gonna give you a little quick update on some of the things.
I just want to say before I forget, the clerk's office looks wonderful.
Yeah, it does.
Thank you.
It does, I mean, I, I, I know I stopped in the hall when I seen that floor, it looks like it's a new floor.
I was gonna say, the only complaint I got is the fact that that piece of floor looks a lot better than all the other floors, and it, it just almost.
To add with that, I asked them how long it's gonna take to do the rest of it.
I was gonna say, it just looks like it doesn't belong.
I mean, some of these floors would shine up nice, I'll say that, you know, like, especially this one next door here, that one would look really good, you know, you get that waxed up, but gonna be something we'll put on there.
No, I, I, I thought it was a new floor, Brianna, so it looks good, and the arrangement in there looks good too, for them, I hope they're happy with it.
I think, sounds like they are, I talked to Mark Lawson the other day, and he said, girls are real happy, he said he's real happy up there, so they're.
Sorry, when I stopped in there, they said they liked it.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. Um, so just a little bit, you know, we're kind of working on getting some of our stuff moved down into the old extension office, kind of a work in progress, when we find some time, we're going down there.
You talking your stuff?
Our office, we're gonna move our office down there, and we've got a little few things we have to work through, getting internet down there and phone line, stuff like that, but it's a start, so we're getting going on it. Another thing, I guess you guys have seen, we had a little water problem last night, so unsure where it came from, I checked a little bit this morning, so these pipes like here, and then there's one in the engineer's office that, uh, they're drains from the roof. If they drain that way, I feel like that might have been part of the problem, so much water, maybe it was backing up, spilling out. I feel like that's probably more likely than water coming from this way. Shelley was here, and she said that there was a lot of water that came down the sidewalk too, so I guess it's possible.
Well, we've had issues previously, but I think with the drainage and the, and the sidewalk, uh, extensions, when we raised that up and kind of took care of those that, but again, when you get a driving rain, two inches of driving rain, it's tough.
Yeah, and so the only thing I was thinking about this morning, and I didn't, I had a lot of time, but there is a cavity underneath these floors, so I feel like if it was coming like that, that cavity would have to fill up in order for it to
bubble up.
Come up, you know, the, the wall seems dry, everything seems dry that way, so that's what makes me lean towards those. But again, that'll be something that we can try and keep an eye on, you know, maybe if we get a heavy rain, if we can cut the plywood. What's that, is the plywood? I'm guessing it probably runs down inside that pipe, you know, so, inside the.
That asbestos?
Yeah. All right, so care facility, um, I met with Jared, um, uh, last week, talked about some needs and wants, he would like to, um, redo the restrooms, the shower rooms, I should say, not the restrooms, I guess bathrooms in them, but he would like to redo the shower rooms at some point, so we just kind of did some measuring, took a look at some things. He would like to replace the, well, we'd like to replace the flooring, get rid of the tile floor, maybe put down epoxy floor, um, utilize some, some onyx on the walls, things like that, um, probably replace the ceiling tile, has soft ceiling tile now, it's not a real good thing to have in a damp, wet area, and also you put those vinyl tile up that, you know, they can, they can take that. Probably update the ventilation, so you get some ventilation over the showers, maybe over the restroom area, you know, kind of update that a little bit, replace fixtures, stalls, and we'll see where the cost takes all this stuff, you know, or whatever, see what that ends up being, so I haven't done anything on that yet, but that'll be something that I'll get a price on and tell you guys what you think or what it is. There is a moisture problem in the hallways out there sometimes, you know, so on the real hot, humid days. It's just a building similar to this where there's not a lot of airflow, you know, we have these little units, bad little units where the doors are closed all the time, you just don't get that airflow, airflow throughout the building, so I think that's part of that problem, so that might be something I'll explore too, is, is maybe getting some sort of ventilation throughout the hallways, you know, so we get some air moving there to solve that problem, and even when the floor is wet, it could create a little slip hazard or whatever, so. They do have, uh, dehumidifiers out, but, you know, they only work to a certain extent, you know, it's not like you have constant airflow. Um, I, I mentioned to him again about that, uh, sprinkler valve, that's still not fixed. He said Tri-State was there like a week or two ago or whatever, they did some work, and he said he mentioned it to him again. So if next time I go out there and it's not done, I'm gonna tell him this needs to get done, because it was approved a couple of months ago to get it fixed, so it needs to needs to get fixed, because it's. Needs to get fixed, because it's dripping all across the floor, you know, it's not working right. The other thing is, and we've talked about this before, is the water system. The infrastructure out there, I mean, I think we'll have to get uh. Now, I've talked to Lisa, see if we can find some blueprints where the water line is, and I don't know. If we need to get some sort of a engineer involved with that probably, or I don't know how that all would work, but again, that's just something that. Thinking about, talking about, I mean, we know it's seeping up by that one hydrant, and we don't know if it's seeping other places, but. We wouldn't want that to go uh haywire in the middle of winter, you know, and then have not have water, you know, or something, so.
Well, maybe touch base with uh Jayden, wants to see what he thinks about that, but. I I I still think, have you talked to Dave Tyson at all, you think he'd be a good resource, he was there a long time, but.
I I talked to him, and he said, well, there should be blueprints around, there should be in a tote, when we looked all over for a tote, and then I think, I don't know, if it was Lisa or Shelley. Said there's a tote here, so it might have got brought here.
We do have a tote.
So.
And I know where's that, so we can get that too.
Yeah, yeah, so. We've been tied up with this project over at the sheriff's office, so haven't really had time to deal with that, but again, that'd be something that. In my mind would be a probably a little bit higher priority than some of the other things, you know.
So, did you talk to, you did talk to Grill Services or something, I know they come out there and they pump the tank and they charge us to spread it on our land and they charge us to.
Yeah, yeah, I I did not talk to them, I compared it to bills in past, it's similar, I mean, it's. A little bit higher, but it's similar in price, so. I mean, it's not like, I I thought it seemed extremely high, but when comparing it to the years past, it was very similar.
I know it's a large, they got a lot of capacity out there, and. I don't, they always had issue with grease traps out there too, didn't they, or something, you have a Jared taking care of that, you don't get involved with that either.
Are you bringing up things?
As long as we neglecting something, you know.
I haven't heard anything about it, I mean, Jared has never told anything to me about it, so I'm not, I can ask him about it, actually, if I see him.
I haven't heard much from Jared, you know, I usually hear a little more, but.
Usually gives me a call once a week or so, or whatever, we kind of have a little talk about different things, whatever, so. So the other thing I was gonna say out there, the hallway, I don't know if anybody's been out there, but that hallway looks really nice where they put the new flooring down. Um I trained Jared and one of his uh supervisors on how to run the floor scrubbing machine, so I think they're gonna try to. At least three times a week, run that across that floor and scrub that floor, and that's what, that's what they've told me they're gonna do, so I'm trying to keep it.
Three times a week? Well, if we get once a week, we got progress.
They're gonna try and do it on third shift, they think that'd be a good thing to do it.
Well, it'd be nice as long as they got the equipment to do it, yeah.
Yeah, it's working, it's working good, you know, I mean, it works like it should, so. Um then the, so the sheriff's office to do jail. Had the master gardeners out there last week, you can look at them, areas on the south side of the building. You know, see what we can do, you know, for if we can do shrubs or flowers or a combination of both, or we want grass, you know. What they're gonna do is, they're gonna give us some pricing on it. They have a new master gardener who has to get forty hours of uh of volunteer time, and he seems very interested in the project. So he's gonna kind of take it under his wing and get some pricing for us, and get some ideas for it, so. Hopefully, we'll see what the price comes in at, and if we decide we want grass there, we'll plant grass. Um they'd like to have some soaker hoses out there, so there's a spigot. In the in the main, like right out front, and then off to the right side, there's not. I think they talked to John Hanson about seeing if they could get a water spigot put out, maybe the on the east side of the building, so they could run soaker hoses. They think that would be a a good thing to have, to keep the maintenance down on the project, and I mean, then then things be watered all the time. We wouldn't have a lot of extra work. Um I know we're thinking about having a an open house. So if in this period between now and then, if we can decide if we're gonna do shrubs, what they're suggesting is. Maybe dig some of the dirt out that's there now, put some compost in. Lay some newspaper down, and then uh uh put some mulch over top of it, and then we won't do any planting until maybe September, and that temperature's a lot better. But at least it would look look good. If we're not gonna do that, if we if we think we're gonna put grass in there, then we would probably just go over and till it up and make sure. We did some weed control last week, but just till it up, make it look so it's kind of presentable or whatever, when that happens.
So, I guess Brent, were you part of that discussion, as far as that what you wanna appearance outside that building, or dirt, flowers, da da da?
Flowers, sounds good to me.
I want somebody digging in the front yard without you knowing it, or somebody knowing it, you know.
I mean, do you really, do you care if it's grass or shrubs or flowers or, no, whatever looks nice?
I think it needs to be spruced up a little bit.
Yeah, I trust the master gardeners, they do a great job everywhere else, I mean, if they're happy, I'm happy.
I mean, I kind of told them, we don't necessarily need to have some arboretum or anything, you know, just so it looks nice, and not a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, that's the biggest, my concern would be the maintenance on it, as long as just, you know. I'm frustrated with it, agree with it.
Okay, so then from there, I took the master gardeners over to the senior center, because there's some stuff growing up out there, and I didn't wanna. Cut something off that we shouldn't be cutting off, but they gave me some some ideas, you know, there's some nuisance trees that need to go. There's also some evergreen shrubs out front. They're suggesting to cut them down one-third. She said they haven't been maintained for a long time, she's afraid that's just gonna be this big stump sticking out, so she said if that's what happens. Tear them out. So if you guys hear anything about why did those shrubs go away, unless you kind of have an idea what's going on. Uh we've been working on sheriff's office furniture. We have several rooms set up, they look really good, I mean, the the rooms that have that wood. What you call it, it's like a cherry wood look, or they they turn out really good, we're not completely finished yet, we have to hang some wall cabinets, but I'm waiting to do that. Until we get the final okay that the desk is in a spot where everybody likes it, so we're not drilling holes, putting holes in the wall that we don't want, so we want to have. Yes, it'd be good to come into Brent's office first, we're heading into furniture move, I mean, there's still a lot of stuff they brought over, so. It was a big, big task. Um there is one area, the deputy's office, I don't know, that's what I call it, but. Furniture that we have isn't fitting real good, I mean, we knew it was gonna be pretty tight, but when we started setting it up. It's. We we're thinking about having a a desk here, and maybe straddling back and forth, so it was kind of stepped out, but. Almost be like a pinball machine, the arrow go to, the walkways is real narrow, so. We've taken off the the fabric part of the furniture, we're trying to use just the tops. And maybe some cabinets underneath to hold it up. We weren't having real good success with that, we're gonna try one more thing today with that, but if that doesn't work, then we're at square one in that room, we don't really have anything. That fits that room very good. We went down to the other storage place, and I mean, there's nothing down there, other than the plastic desks.
You're talking like a cubicle type thing, or is this your deputy, all the, just the?
Yeah, so there's like, maybe five.
Not chief deputy, but where they all congregate, just sit there, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be like.
Workstations?
We're looking at five desks in that area, you know.
They instead of sticking out, just kind of like face the wall and be.
Yeah, the way they're made, I mean. We believe you, we spent a lot of time trying to face them against the wall, turn them, you know, every which way that we possibly could, and it just. The way they're made, it just doesn't work, because they're like an L shape, they have to be in L shape, because that's the way the one piece is.
But, so I, I'll hop up here, I talked to John last night, and said, what was the original plan for in that? Patrol room before we got this gift from, you know, a member of the community. He said initially, there would have been like ten cubo, ten cubicles in there for, you know, ten deputies to work. And I said, okay, well, and he did that, I can't remember the jail he did that, um and he was gonna send it to me, but I haven't received it yet. So I said, well, what would that generally cost, these ten cubicles he was gonna put in there, and he was guessing off the top of his head, so this isn't. In concrete or stone, but he thought like twenty thousand. Now, Jeff and I would be in agreement that if we can't, we're still gonna try a couple of things with these cubicles to make the desktops kind of work somehow. But if we can't do that. We almost think it'd be better to have a countertop, maybe on two sides of the room at least, because when you put the cubicles in there. They block the outlets, you know, they have the walls and stuff, and they block outlets, if you ever have. A power issue or something you gotta get at, then you gotta move all that stuff and uh get to the walls and that, so. Countertop is probably the best solution, and that way it's not like individually divided, you know, you can kind of spread out and. So many deputies could be alone there or whatever, and we need kind of a countertop in the front anyway for.
Not meaning to sidetrack this or whatever, but can we talk about it on Thursday when we have our. Yep. Where we can actually see how big the room is and kind of picture it, because right now, you guys got a lot of things you're saying that make no sense. I can't picture the cubicle.
Yeah.
And maybe, and maybe by then, we'll have. Yeah, I mean, we can definitely look at that on Thursday.
We'll be walking through the room anyway.
That's really all I had, that was the last thing I was. Pricing for countertop, but we'll wait with that, see how that works out.
We have something for you, though.
Oh, good.
Something else, senior center, they requested that they, when we allow them to remove the stage down there at senior. Now, we'd like to have you take a look at that, make sure that that's feasible, that there ain't a bunch of wiring attached to it or something, or. If there's not carpet underneath, if there's flooring underneath, we're gonna have to replace it, or, you know. Just take a look at it and give us your best opinion of tearing that out or leaving it.
Okay.
I know.
Somebody that would be willing to take it out.
Yeah, not for us to take it out, but we just gotta give them permission to take it out.
Okay.
And I don't know.
It might be kind of hard to tell if there's carpet underneath it, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either, I, and the history on it was, it's probably only a foot and a half high. But, I mean, somebody did have an accident around one time, so we put railing on it, and we're gonna build a ramp, and that did go from. To come to fruition either, but anyway, see what you think.
Yeah, well, I'll do that.
Anything else for Joe? Thanks, guys. All right. It appears that Becky Chaplin is here and from Human Resources, and she's next on our agenda. Good morning.
Good morning. Couple more personnel things for you this week. So we did receive notice of resignation from one of our county conservation park rangers, so Adam McPherson has resigned that position, so I would ask for a motion to accept. The resignation of Adam McPherson effective July ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Go move, make that motion.
A motion is, and a second to accept the resignation of Adam McPherson from Conservation, as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
And then after nineteen years as our coordinator of disability services, Lynn Bopes has decided that she's ready to retire. So I would ask for a motion to accept the retirement of Lynn Bopes effective July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I would act, I would add reluctantly into that motion, but uh I got a motion and a second to accept the resignation of Lynn Bopes as presented. All those in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Let me do that over. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
And Russ Long, one of our sheriff's deputies, who has been with us for just over thirty years, is also retiring at the end of this month. I would ask for a motion to accept the retirement of Russ Long effective July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
A motion and a second to approve the retirement of Russ Long, as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Yeah, Russ started off as like a jailer for us, I think. Um he was like a part-time jailer, then he went to part-time deputy, then full-time, so.
But he was city cop before that.
Was he? I don't remember if he, yeah.
Yeah, I know he was in the city.
Yeah, he was, he was in Preston, I think. McCoke to two, I know he was in Preston for a while, because we didn't talk about that when I talked about it, but.
Yeah, we appreciate their services over the years, and um tough to replace that kind of knowledge.
Yep. Um so um Russ Long is eligible to remain on our health insurance plan. Um and we have historically provided an early retirement health insurance second for those instances where employees retire under their normal retirement age. There's a cost savings between salary and benefits um with replacing them with less longevity paid um employees. So I would ask for a motion to approve the early retirement agreement between Jackson County and Russ Long, and authorize the board to sign.
A motion and a second to approve the early retirement agreement with the board's signature, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
And then, um because we have a partially self-funded health insurance plan, we are required to fire, file a certificate of insurance with the Iowa Commissioner. Of insurance annually after the close of our plan year, we do have to use an actuarial firm to create the. Um they give us an actuarial opinion, a financial report, all the documents that we need to file that with this, with the commissioner. Um we have used iHeart in the past, since they have sent me in a two-year service agreement, um they are great to work with, they do a good job. Um I would recommend renewing with them again. Um so I would ask for a motion to approve the service agreement with the iHeart company to provide the five oh nine A actuarial services for fiscal years ending twenty-four and twenty-five. In the amount of twenty-nine hundred dollars and approve the chair to sign.
Motion second to approve the service agreement with iHeart as presented with chair's signature. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, carry.
And then the sheriff's department has had three part-time deputy vacancies that have just, they have not filled them. Um it was, I understood that they had made a couple of offers, I did not know that Bryce Schmidt was going to start today, he is here today, I don't know if you've met him, he's with Joel in the security kiosk. Um I will have to bring in a certificate of appointment for him next week.
I'm sorry, could you give me a name again, a little? Bryce?
Schmidt, yep, and he is from Asbury, he is a retired deputy from Scott County.
And he will be part-time with our service?
He'll be part-time as a sheriff's deputy, yeah, so you'll probably see him in the kiosk and on the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good information.
Finalize that next week. That's all I have then. You're welcome, so I'll leave, you all three sign the insurance agreement, and then Mike, you just sign this one, so I'll just leave. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see where we're at here, we are down to, you said John Hanson is not coming, is that correct? And what do we know about uh Andrew? No show?
I, he's, that's not time for him.
Okay, so we have Andrew Long also on our agenda, just so the people know, or we put him, we come. Put him on every week, just in case they gotta come in with the new report, um with the new jail opening and such, we like to keep updated. And keep the public updated of what's going on, when the open houses might be, so we just keep putting him on our agenda, it's not that he's not here and not showed up. Um sometimes he does not have any new business for us, so that's the case.
For an hour ahead of time, he might be coming over here.
Oh, he could be coming over, we are, I I thought.
I had Luann, I sent her an email saying if Lynn Bopes could fill John Hanson's.
And she said, yes, that would be great, so don't be here to intend to take that spot.
Okay, so we are down to um Luann. Good morning.
Good morning. Um all I have is the calendar this week. Um seven o'clock tonight is the Board of Health Meeting for NIN. Wednesday, July seventeen, at one thirty P M is a Jackson County Security Advisory Committee meeting um downstairs, also for NIN. Four P M tomorrow is the Bellevue Library's one hundred year celebration in Bellevue, for any of you that are free to attend that. At five o'clock tomorrow night is Coconut River Watership Management Authority's Executive Committee Meeting, and you're meeting in Piazza to take a tour of. A project at the New Mallory Abbey, that's for Don. Okay, also at five o'clock tomorrow is ECI's council meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. Um in addition, um we also have a meeting at six o'clock. Um Wednesday night, or Together We Build Inc. for Don, that got moved from Monday night, because they were worried about the weather. And at seven o'clock that night is the Together We Build Steering Committee Meeting um for NIN, also from Monday for the same reason. On Thursday, July eighteenth at eight A M, um there's a work session at the new law enforcement center for all of you. At nine A M is an IRS special meeting, um it's hybrid, either here in Dubuque or or in Dubuque or by Zoom for NIN. At one P M, NIN has a Great Wood City meeting by Zoom. At five o'clock Thursday night is a conservation board meeting in Hurstville, for any of you that want to attend that, and I know NIN's been going to those. At six o'clock that night. At six o'clock that night is a Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting by Zoom for Don. On, on Monday, July twenty second at nine thirty A M is a P E I meeting in Dubuque only for Mike, and I have a Zoom option this time. And at seven o'clock that night is a Board of Adjustment meeting in, in the created room downstairs for any of you that want to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July twenty third at nine A M. Um, and that evening at six o'clock will be the Jackson County Fair Parade and the kickoff for the, for fair week.
Um, I don't know that I have received any emails on that prosperity Eastern Iowa meeting, but we know where that's at, is that, that, uh, um. I believe last year was at the, what do you call it, it was kind of a conservation place up there next to the harbor somewhere.
I will look and see what they said, but I know she wants it to be a person.
I don't know that I sent, I received anything on that, but anyway, we'll check.
We'll check on the place, yep.
Okay, any questions for Luann, is that it? Is that all you have?
It's all I have.
Oh, how nice of you. Thank you. Okay, so we're down to, um, Lynn and Jack and such, uh, any other commissioner boards, uh, I did have a, um. Uh, tourism meeting the other day that I sat in on, and, uh, there are a lot of activities going on, so if people out there and they're looking for activities and things to do here yet the rest of the summer. Um, get to the, um, Jackson County Tourism Site or Chamber Sites, um, they had, there's a video on there too that's promoting Jackson County and billboards and such that are going up. Um, they had an influencer that came around and, um, went to a lot of different places in Jackson County, you know, the caves of Bluff Lake. Went to a lot of different, uh, different, um, buildings and event venues that we have, attractions, um, throughout the county. Um, so there's a video that will be made of that, and we've seen a short preview of it, it wasn't completed yet, but it was really nice and, you know, offshore and whatnot, some of the other highlights that we have. She, she also visited several restaurants in the area here in McCokenin. So it's, uh, and they're also working on a. Um, with the Ag, it's an Ag Day it's called, and they're talking about having, supporting a ATV safety, um, class, if you will. Not sure where that will be, if that will be promoted along with the, uh, Piasta site. Um, they had some people that were up there for an Ag Day and Safety Day, and that's a nice facility if you've never been up there, so. Um, they do a lot of different, um, Ag trainings and safeties up there, so they're gonna promote it. Um, hopefully an ATV safety. Class for everyone to join in on, so. It was a good meeting, I, I thought there was a lot of information passed out, and there's a lot of information online, you know, between the Bellevue and McCokenin Chamber and the tourism, so. Yeah, check it out if you're interested in some of that. Any other commissions or reports that we?
Uh, of course, we didn't meet, I met with the business group and right now they're kind of prepping between doing what they normally do with, uh, their, uh, job fairs and. Skills trainings and things like that, racing for, to see what kind of ripple effect the John Deere layoffs. Had in our area as far as down-chain suppliers, smaller businesses that are, will be affected that supply parts to John Deere. As those, um, layoffs they had. See how it'll affect the whole system, so we're trying to figure out how that's going right now.
Yeah, you only think about that, you know, even Plastics Unlimited made a lot of stuff for John Deere too, and now that trickles down to, like you say, the effect of everyone below, so. Yeah. Anything else that anybody would like to report on?
The Per Creek Project, obviously, we're still waiting on W H K S to get all their stuff finalized there. Through all the channels it needs to get through so they can keep going with that project, so.
Sounded pretty positive, Dr. Josh a little bit, they sounded positive about it and.
Yeah.
Um, had a plan, kind of designed to, um, maybe, depends on what the costs were, of course.
Different ways they can, kind of gonna bid it out in different projects, so that way if the costs are maybe above where they want it to be right now. They got everything laid out and ready to go if there's other grants and fundings that become available that they already have that kind of. Section already done, so they can keep moving forward. A project, of course, as we know, will have the disc golf in it. Which, from the gentleman from the engineers, talked about. The guy that's working on that on their end is a big disc golfer, and he's like, this is gonna be an excellent course, a lot of challenges and. Can see it bringing a lot of people to the.
Well, we, we hope it brings people and revenue well, so.
Right.
That's what we're up against here. Okay, well, at this time, I suppose we'll take a short recess, we've got, uh, Jack Willie and Lynn Bopes yet on our, on our agenda for an update for, uh, Coordinator of Disability. We will reconvene at this time and we are joined, uh, with Lynn Bopes, our current Coordinator of Disability Services, and Laney Birkin, who will take over that responsibility shortly. And good morning, ladies.
Good morning. So today we are here, um, just to recap, the Region's Governing Board meeting yesterday, Jack was also in attendance and he may join us here today, he may not be able to make it. And then I don't, I, the, yeah, well, Laney and I, um, did attend remotely yesterday because we had some more training stuff we wanted to get done, and we just thought it was. Wise for us probably to save a little bit of the travel time, and then there was a one o'clock meeting before that that we would have been at, so we stayed and also attended virtually. Um, so there was conversation by David Farmer, the Region's Fiscal Agent, on the fund balance at the end of fiscal year FY twenty four. And while the books won't be closed until, I believe it's the end of September, he's assured everybody that the fund balance will probably be right about zero. So this will be the first year in the last, uh, three years, I believe, that they have instituted the consequences if you're not below the designated fund balance, that we will not have a consequence. Because we will not have to return any money or get paid less from the state for the current fiscal year, so. Um, that's what it's looking like at this point anyway. Uh, there still are some outstanding bills, of course, for FY twenty four, but. Coming in. Uh, you know, the interest is still on the whole transition timeline and what's happening with that, and. I think what I'm really reporting is nothing new in terms of the timeline, so the map are out for discussion, they've had. There, there may be one left of the town hall meetings that they're having, they will make that announcement, uh, by July thirty first as far as. What behavioral health districts, what counties will be in which district. And there's three maps currently up for consideration, one is the original map that we've seen since the beginning, and that's the map that keeps the five counties from our region intact as one of the seven behavioral health districts. One of the other maps is the, uh, map that would be a map for the area agencies on aging. And the third option is the map that it would be for the community action programs, so, um. We will see what they decide, and Laney will let everybody know as soon as we're here.
And we're hoping for the original, is that what we're hoping for?
Correct, yes, if.
Absolutely.
Yeah. If of the three maps, uh, the original one is not selected, then that means that Jackson County will be aligned with a different set of counties. With either other option, so certainly the preference is to stay with the players that we know and continue doing the work we're doing together with the five counties. They did tell, um, Lori last week that there will be three requests for proposals coming out here in fall. I don't think the exact time of release of these has been identified. One of them will be the, um, effort to get people to submit an application to be selected as an administrative services organization or an A S O. For each of the behavioral health districts. And another one is what they're calling now the lead entity, this is a little bit of a variation from what we've been talking about up until now. Originally, it was our understanding that the A S O entities would be the entity that would apply both to those behavioral health districts, but also to the. Aging and Disability Resource Centers or A D R Cs. Now the state, from how I understand it, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, they have determined that there will be one lead entity for all of the A D R Cs. To oversee them, and then underneath that lead entity will be the individual organizations identified as an Aging and Disability Resource Center. And the third, uh, request for proposal will be to identify what they're calling access points for each of the A D R Cs, and so basically the access point. From my, what I understand is the place where everybody would call within that Aging and Disability Resource Center. Make that initial call as a hub to find out what services are available in that identified district. Um, the announcements of the s- successful recipients are to be made by December thirty first. So we're really still kind of in this holding pattern, we're in a holding pattern until we know which district we're gonna be in, but then we're in another holding pattern, the way I would look at it going forward. Um, as to who's gonna be in control or have the authority over the district that Jackson County is assigned to. I don't know, Jack or Laney, if you have anything else you want to add about that conversation?
Well, I, I would just add that they, uh, Lori said as soon as there is, uh, a final map that is chosen. Um, the, our region will have a, a joint meeting between the, um. Con, the, the, the consul and also, uh, the, um, advisory committee so that we can look at what's going to. What's gonna play out. And that'll be a Zoom meeting, um, after the announcement comes out. I did ask at the meeting yesterday if, uh, a county could opt out. And they said, well, that's always a possibility, I mean, I really am not happy with the thoughts that we would be joining a northern group. Um, we don't know what their services are, we don't know. How it works, we know what our current region provides, what the services are, and, um, it's just a big question mark as far as I'm concerned.
That's what I was thinking when, you know, when you look at the other two maps and if you're going with a different area, you know, we kind of know the direction that. Our region right now is looking at trying to do, where when, if we get. Not stuck, but placed in a different area, we really don't know what their plans have been mapping out over the past year like we do in the region we're already in.
So absolutely. That's absolutely true, Nan, and I, I think that, uh, um, my biggest concern is the, the children's services that Christine Goddard does, and you know. She provides a lot of stuff to all of our schools in Jackson County, and, um, I don't want to see that disappear.
Yeah, I would agree, I mean, I think one of the challenges we have is, Jack mentioned Christine has done a lot and brought a lot of services within the school districts, the schools have embraced those services. We know that law enforcement, um, has embraced a lot of the services through the region's crisis system. Um, and those are, are really, over time, becoming established, and. One of the examples that I'll give is the involvement of the region's crisis system a couple of weeks ago when there was the missing person from Cedar County, just so happened all the counties were in, that were involved with this situation. Are in our mental health region, but a gentleman who was missing from Cedar County was located in Clinton County, but Jackson County was involved as well because it occurred out in Eden Valley. So that Friday morning, um, they made contact with the region's crisis system and the co-responder that is serving. And an interim basis to cover our county a couple of days a week. Came up, and then also the program manager for our region's crisis system came up and they met with individuals at the scene. Uh, they were there the better part of that Friday, and then the added service that they did was because it was, you know. All of those situations can be kind of troublesome when you're involved in them. Um, they made contact with all the people, everyone had signed in that was at the scene, and they made follow-up contact with all those individuals. About a week after, just checking in with them to make sure that they were doing okay and they had any questions or, you know, any difficulties as a result of being a, a part of that. And that's a service that obviously we could have used in some other situations here in the last few years, and. From all accounts, and I'm hearing accounts from law enforcement, from the crisis system, everybody is very happy to know that that was available to them, so.
So the only, no doubt, there probably was some situations in the past couple of years here that you could have used that service.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Uh, the only other thing I was gonna mention was there was also a special governing board meeting last Monday on July eighth, that was called because. Uh, H H S, Health and Human Services at the state level had not sent out the contract for the FY twenty five year. Out to the regions until probably about July seventh, and yet if we wanted to get the first. Payment from the state, the first quarterly payment for this current fiscal year, the signed contract from what I understand had to be returned by July fifteenth, so it had to be returned by yesterday. So Lori was able to convene, um, the governing board and they met and signed that contract, there was really. Nothing I would say noteworthy about this contract compared to the contract of the last couple of years, but it did get done quickly and. Our payment should be on the way to the region if it's not already here. So that's about all I can remember, you guys have anything you'd like to add? I think you covered it well.
I guess the only, I, the only thing I would like to add is this obviously will be Lynn's last meeting with the Board of Supervisors and, um, uh. We tried to sing her praises yesterday, but she was, she was back up here because it was too hot, but, um. Um, I know Laney will do a great job, but Lynn, I just cannot thank you enough for everything that you've done for Jackson County over the years. Um, you're an amazing woman, and I wish you the best in your retirement, but we're certainly going to miss you being. Physically, uh, a part of the county work.
Thank you, Jack, for those kind of words, and I do miss it, but.
Well, I can sneak around here.
Time.
Give my praises to you if you join me, Lynn.
I don't know.
Up front here, we don't have a boxing match or anything.
Are you sure?
No, on behalf of the board and, uh, everybody concerned here, Lynn, Lynn come to work every day, you know, not only to do the job, but she was passionate about. So, I mean, she, you have her all. You know, to, uh, to the county. And not only, you know, not only to this county, but, uh, counties surrounding us and, you know, maybe the whole state she influenced, you know, so. She was passionate about her job, very professional. So in recognition of that. Yeah, I know this is pretty, pretty big gift here, but.
Why?
We'd like to recognize Lynn Bulbys today in recognition of your dedicated service for more than nineteen years on behalf of your fellow citizens in Jackson County and across Eastern Iowa. Your leadership and compassion have had a positive impact on many people's lives, people like you make a difference. And it's to Jackson County, its employees and the Board of Supervisors extend their heartfelt appreciation, and maybe it's just a small reward, how much we do appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Mike, I really do appreciate it. Yep.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And best wishes to you.
Thanks. And I have enjoyed the time here, it's been, uh, kind of rather interesting, those of you that have been around this field for. As long as I have been at the county level know that we've had numerous changes, some for the good, some for the not so good, so.
Yeah, well, and, and that's like I said, you know, you, you lived through that, so you lived through a lot of different changes from the, uh, the. The different changes through the, through the years of the, and the souls and the. How the, how the vouchers were paid and all that, so it's, yeah, we appreciate it.
Well, and I've always appreciated the support from the Board of Supervisors, whoever was serving that role was always very supportive of. Of me coming in and saying, well, I'm not really sure what's gonna happen here, and stay tuned for next month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That hasn't changed in a hundred years, Lynn, I know, I never really got anywhere back today.
And you know, again, we, we appreciate Jack's work with the services for that many years because, uh, he was right by your side, um, for thirty some years. And, you know, again, we, we appreciate Jack's work with the services for that many years because, uh, he was right by your side for thirty-seven years and.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, working through it. So we, we truly appreciate that. We can't, like I said before, we, we had to accept the resignation of one of our deputies and I said. Hard to replace that knowledge, you know?
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks. That's my plan.
Good luck to you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
And along with that, before you all run away, we hope that, uh, and, and we really appreciate Lynn stepping forward and, uh, we feel that you're gonna be a. Linay, Linay. I got it once, you know?
Yeah.
Once, I'm only good for one time of meeting, so. Um, we appreciate that. We expect you're gonna be a real asset to our community also. So I wish you the very best and if. You have anything for us that we can help you or any questions, feel free.
Absolutely.
We expect a good nineteen, thirteen.
Game.
I don't know, you might be thirty-five, so you've got thirty, twenty, thirty.
Um, she, I couldn't think of anybody that would be better to, to, uh, assume this position, quite frankly. So I'm sure I have. Full confidence that things will go as well as, as the state allows us to have them go, right?
Yeah.
And some things are out of our control. So, but Linay is well aware of the circumstances of her employment and. And will do very well, so.
Well, we hope that it all works out, of course, to, to our benefit or not to the benefit, but everyone's benefit.
Right.
Like I said, you're just not a part of Jackson County. You were part of Eastern Iowa, the state, basically, so. Hopefully that, the region and, yeah, so.
And of course, the next few months or whatever, as they try to make these decisions, if you need us to help sway or talk or persuade some people, let us know, we'd be glad to.
Perfect. I will absolutely keep you guys informed and we'll go from there.
And Lynn's only phone call away, you know?
Yes, I, I told you that.
Yes, limited hours. This is a suggestion. You put everybody's number in your phone. So when you see who's calling you, you decide really you're there. See, it's available, yeah? Not available right now. We do appreciate it, Lynn, we really do. So.
Well.
My short time here, I couldn't, I couldn't say enough good things, you know, so.
Well, thank you guys very much. I really appreciate it and I will miss it, but I'm also ready for the next event.
Oh, yeah, no doubt. I'll have fun.
Thank you. Yeah, that's right. That's right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks.
I absolutely will. So I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Okay. Where are we? We got everybody taken care of? We got all this? Thanks for joining in, Jack.
Yep, I wanted to come down, but we have a repairman here and Marilyn had to be gone, so she said, you can't leave him alone, so. So hopefully he's almost done.
Repairman out telling the service call, I always tell my customer, if you watch it, it cuts you twice as much. If you help it, it cuts.
Well, I'm upstairs, he's downstairs, so I'm not watching him. I wouldn't be a, able to do anything that he's doing, so you take care.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. Um, if there's nothing else before the, um, board this morning, I'd just like to thank, uh, McCokenan Fire Department. And EMS services that were around here the night of the fire, you know?
And surrounding community.
That, I'd also like to throw out to the, the spouses of the firemen that when, uh, they got called away, kind of stepped up when they had rather their largest shindig of the year going on. It kind of went on without a hitch, so, uh, there was a lot of people going over and above that.
Any community members that stepped up to help, I'm sure, you know, it was one of them. Um, situations and the surrounding communities too. I throw my thanks out to them for the support and, and whatever. I apologize, I couldn't be here that night. My wife was recovering yet, so. But anyway, we appreciate the help. We appreciate their service. I know they had to tear down the aerial the way it sounded and put it back up, but. So the situation you don't expect, but we sure appreciate our, our local service and volunteers here anyway.
And the people that stuck around afterwards to help clean the party up so the firemen didn't have a, a mess to come back to, so.
They really do an amazing job.
The true character of the community comes out in times like this, so, uh, it's.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or, uh, criticism or anything you want to throw out to the board this morning?
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Have a good day.
Meeting adjourned.